Evening, welcome to the Morrison County Planning Commission Public Hearing for September 17th, 2024. Please rise for the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a few items to cover before we get started. Please sign in at the door if you have not done so already. There you will also find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we will follow tonight. If you wish to take one, please do. Please put any electronic devices on silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. You have that going, Amy?
I do.
Members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners, with one member of each of the five Commissioner Districts. Land Service staff is here to assess the Planning Commission with its duties. The task of the Planning Commission is to hold the public hearing and make a recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of proving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There is a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on agenda, we'll hear a staff report, then we'll hear testimony from the applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony, and that'd be the podium in the corner by the door. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. The Planning Commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our findings of fact criteria as required by the Minnesota Statute and County Ordinance. We will have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made. Then, and there we will be a final, then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the County Board of Commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The County Board of Commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting, and will either grant or deny the request. So we have a few agenda items on tonight. The first one is Gerald Wade, if I'm saying it right, application to rezone a parcel for residential to agriculture for the purpose of allowing an RV located in Point, Government Lot 4, Section 7, Township 42, Range 28, Richardson Township. The applicants, please come up to the table up front and sit. Then when you guys get seated, please speak into the microphone and state your names for the record, please.
Ronald Peterson. Gerald Wade.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll move on to the staff report. Amy, you ready with that?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request for a rezone from residential zoning to agriculture zoning, located in Section 7 of Richardson Township. The ordinance reference for this request is Section 508, and that requires a public hearing to change the official zoning map. Here is a plat map of Richardson Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the rezone request and the survey provided by the applicant. Here's an aerial photograph of the property outlined in blue, and then here's some oblique imagery of the property as well. The applicant purchased this 10-acre parcel split from his father-in-law's parcel to the north in 2022. The parcel is served by 360th Avenue, which is also known as County Road 272. The parcel is currently zoned residential. Surrounding parcels are zoned residential, shoreline, and agriculture. Uses consist of shoreline, seasonal and permanent residences, wetland, and forest. Then here's an aerial map again with the zoning layer turned on. Everything in blue is residential, green shoreline, and everything that does not have color is agriculture. And then here is that same map with the wetland layer turned on, so you can see the areas of wetland in the area. Recreational vehicles, otherwise known as campers, are not an allowed use within the residential zoning district. The applicant is requesting to rezone his parcel to agriculture to permit a recreational vehicle. The parcel is adjacent to four-wheeler and snowmobile trails, and the applicant would like to utilize the property for recreational purposes. The purpose of the residential district is to provide areas for moderate-density, single-family residential development, generally near or adjacent to incorporated areas or other areas of the county with such levels of development. The purpose of the agriculture zoning district is to promote and protect areas which have high-quality agricultural lands and are essentially rural in nature. Within this district, agricultural activities are given precedence over other land uses. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is residential, Goal B1, and those objectives are 1 and 2. And then in agriculture, Goal A1, A2, Objective 1. 125 notices were sent. No comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then, Mr. Chair, as you know, there is no set criteria for zoning amendments, but here are just a few items that you may want to use for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Guess at this time, would applicants have any, one of you two have anything else to add? Everything seem correct?
She kind of summarized it pretty well.
Okay.
We're just looking to put a camper on the property.
Okay. Then what else? You were talking some kind of recreational, four-wheelers, stuff like that, or what? Maybe give us a little background on that.
What we do up there is, we've been coming up there, we had a cabin across the street that was right over us, Squaw Point Village. We've been coming up here for over 20 years. We love the area, but we want to also protect the area and be cognizant of doing things the right way, applying for the right permits, doing things the way that the county wants. We don't want any backlash from anybody. So, you know, we went to the county and asked for this permit and said, "Well, we don't do that." And we were, you know, kind of coaxed, I guess, saying, you know, "Your best way to go is ask for a zoning change and then go down that road." We've had the perk test done on the land so that we know that it can support a...
Septic.
Septic.
There's actually two areas that'll support a septic on the property.
And we've, those should be filed with the county already. We went through Steve Witasek, who's one of your certified people on your list, to do that. We had a driveway put in, which also encompassed, you know, the county and their culvert and all of that, and we used Dave Sera local contractor to, you know, do all the dirt work and everything. And now we just want to, you know, basically, you know, use RVs. We want to come up and boat and have a place to stay. As you know, there's no place to stay anywhere close, anywhere. So that's kind of where we're sitting, and we're, we want to kind of develop the land as we go. Gerald's, oh, 20-some years my junior, and as he can afford, develop, build, develop, build, but you have to have a place to stay and a place and a methodology to do it, and we just want to do it the right way.
Okay. So you had a cabin across the road at one time, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then you got rid of that?
It's actually turned over to my other daughter.
Okay, that's fine. So now you own this property, you're just looking at some way that you can utilize it, have somewhere to stay?
Yeah, and then fish the lake.
Yep.
A zillion ATV trails are right there. The, we actually allow the snowmobile trail to go through a parcel of the land even.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the board here have any questions for either the applicants or the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, Miss Amy, can you pull up the map that highlights the zoning around that parcel? So the blue is all?
The blue is residential, and then...
Shoreland.
This is agriculture, residential, shoreline.
And there, literally, there is not a house or anything in any of that.
So with that, can, Mr. Chair, with that connecting to the, to ag, that big of a piece of ag, is the spot zoning is really kind of out of the question on that, or is that a consideration?
In my opinion and my definition of spot zoning, and we just had training on this here last month, this ain't even close to spot zoning.
Okay, thank you.
We really don't have any intention of doing anything agricultural.
You guys have anything?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marv.
It looks like majority of that's wet, lowland like that. And you were talking about possibly placing a camper there. Whereabouts on that piece of property are you planning on putting that in relationship to the trail there's, it looked like a trail was on the corner of that, if I zoomed in?
Pretty much the opposite end of the property, so it'd be on the south end of the property.
If you want to just, you can go up to the screen if you can kind of point.
Can you zoom in on it? You can see the driveway if you zoom in on it. I don't know if we can on this one, maybe.
Yeah, you might not be able to.
Right here's the driveway.
Oh, yeah.
And, and right within that same area is also where the perk test was taken. Okay, and whereabouts?
There's a nice area here and there's a nice area here. Both are higher, and it's gonna be just fine for camp.
Oh, okay, and in relationship where the stone wheel ATV trail is, where is that on that property? You said you allowed that coming through there?
The snowmobile trail actually runs up there.
Right at Logan Lane, right there?
Yep.
Okay.
Takes off that direction.
Okay.
His property.
Okay, and so the driveway is already in there, and you have the perk test, that's it, so. And, you know, bordering ag property, and I assume that you just basically use it for hunting and running?
Actually, I don't hunt, but the lake is fantastic.
Got to have a place to park to go fishing.
Yeah, and I was, I'm thrilled for the snowmobile trail to go through the property too. That's, that's a nice plus.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
So are the lots on both sides of you would be probably, what, east and west? Are they, there, nobody living on them? They're just vacant lots?
If that's, yes.
Is it east and west? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The west is actually the road.
Okay, so it would be kind of...
So it'd be east.
Okay, so there's nobody living on any of them?
Cattails and deers, wood ticks.
Gotta live too. It's not quite so well. Thank you.
Okay, when I look at this, and we looked at some of them questions that Amy had up, and, you know, was there a mistake when this was zoned? I don't think there was a mistake. It's just like a lot of zoning, everything, you know, we had shoreline, and then they just zoned so much of it residential, and then so much ag in the future is how I see they did it. So now we look at it, here there's a lot of chunks of land right along there that doesn't have really a use, because there could be some houses in it, but probably not a lot. I guess you did the perk test, there's places to put a couple areas, different areas for the sewer system. I, I think if you would change this to ag, no matter what the use is going to be, it opens up the opportunity to use these, this parcel, probably some other ones. So I guess when I look at it, I think it does work in our comprehensive plan as long as they're cognizant and come in and get the right permits and make sure you ain't doing anything in the wetland or made setbacks and all that stuff. You already went and looked at, found areas for sewer system, whether there'd be campers, RVs for now, maybe a home later, whatever. I don't think it's a mistake to want to rezone this. When we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at the area and how it was already zoned, and there's ag right there. It, I think it just gives opportunity to utilize some of this land. So that's my thoughts on it. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
A question for Amy, just following up, a few months back, we addressed some of these issues with RVs and agricultural, and 10 acres allows, what again, to refresh my memory?
Uh, let's see, so I believe this would allow up to four campers. Anything more than that, they'd have to license as a campground. So this one, I'd have to double-check, but I think this one will allow up to four.
Okay, and then five is the trigger point for?
Five would be the trigger point for licensing.
Okay.
Uh, we have no interest in becoming a campground.
Well, I only ask the question because it is by lakeshore and cabins in the area. If that were to allow an expansion of, and there might be some concern from surrounding folks in the neighborhood that would be concerned about it, but I just wanted clarification.
We're kind of planning to keep everything behind the trees, so I don't think it's even going to be visible from the road. That's kind of how we have it set up right now, trying to keep a screen.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? So just keep in mind, we're looking at this rezone, we want to know what they want to do with the property, but we're not deciding what they're actually going to do with the property. We're deciding if we can rezone it to ag or not, if it fits. I don't think it's not, to me, it's not spot zoning, there's ag all around it. I, like I said before, I think it gives an opportunity to utilize the property more than it's being used now, which is basically for nothing. So I think that's what we're, we're looking at here more is if we want to just rezone it or not. I mean, we want to know what you want to do with it, but we're not going to dig into that that deep, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Amy.
Essentially, what you're looking at as a rezone is, is the uses that are allowed in the zoning district there now, and the uses that are allowed in the zoning district they're asking for, and whether that is a suitable place for all of the uses that are allowed in, in that particular zoning district.
And Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
Also, it wasn't brought up, but through the notes here, Shannon from Soil and Water didn't have a problem as long as Phil was not brought in, so.
In the wetland areas, yes, yep. So is there any more discussion? I guess at this time, we'll open it up to the public for public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to speak to this application from the public, please go up to the podium, state your name for the record, and... And I have to ask it three times before I close it, so is there any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. You guys have any other discussions? If not, we'd make, take a motion to either approve or recommend approval or denial, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a second?
Mr. Chair, don't we have to vote on this here?
That's what we're recommending, and then we got to vote on it.
I'll second through vote on this.
Okay, oh, I guess, yeah, we could have just voted, yeah, sorry. Okay, what does do, okay, Marvin?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. Okay, now we'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I will second it.
Okay, there's a motion made in second to recommend approval to the County Board of Commissioners. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll recommend approval for the rezone to the County Board of Commissioners. They'll review this and make their decision on September 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is Bruce Proell.
Proell.
Proell, Prolo, whatever, you can pronounce it when you come up. 35954 Hoffman Beach Drive, Hillman. Application to replat three parcels to create conforming lots located in the lots 1 and 2 of Hoffman Beach and Point of Government Lot 1, Section 6, Township 42, Range 28, Richardson Township. Please state your name for the record.
Deb Hammond.
Tom Hammond.
Okay. Guess at this time, Amy, you ready with the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request to replat, a replat to three lots located in Section 6 of Richardson Township. The ordinance reference is Section 1500, and that pertains to the plating of land in Morrison County. And here's a plat map of Richardson Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here is the plat application, along with the survey. And then here's an aerial photograph of the areas that we're talking about outlined in blue and yellow. And then here's some oblique imagery of the property. Again, the applicant owns lots 1 and 2 of Hoffman Beach subdivision on Platt Lake. The Hoffman Beach subdivision was established in 1962. The applicant owns these lots with several other family members, and each family member has a recreational vehicle on the property, and a central septic system serves the property. So here is an outline of that subdivision, and then the two lots that they own within the subdivision are outlined in yellow. In 2021, the Land Services Department sent a notice of violation to the property owners informing them there were too many recreational vehicles on the property. The property owners pursued a variance to keep the surplus recreational vehicles, and that variance was denied. Since then, the applicants have upgraded the septic system, moved the recreational vehicles to meet wetland setback, and have been working on solutions to legally keep the five recreational vehicles. The applicant has purchased additional land and is proposing to replat the area into three new parcels. So again, here are the three, this is the area that they're asking to replat, so a portion of it is not within the subdivision, and so that's, that's why when you're reconfiguring something within a subdivision, you've got to plat it. Three compliant lots are proposed with easement access to Hoffman Beach Drive. Under this configuration, two recreational vehicles are allowed per parcel. No development agreement is needed, as no construction of public or private roads is proposed. The surveyor has worked with the county surveyor on the plat design and compliance with the ordinance and state plating requirements. Since this is a straightforward replat, the preliminary and final plat is being considered together, so you will not see this again in front of you. The land use control ordinance allows for the county to require the set aside of a portion of the subdivided land for uses open space, park, recreational or common areas, or a contribution to the county park fund in lieu of land designated within the subdivision. This property will be utilized for private recreational purposes with no permanent dwellings. Open space is provided, and no contribution to the park fund is necessary. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is natural resources and open spaces, Goal C2, shoreline development, Goal D1. And then the county comprehensive water plan goals and objectives, this is surface water goal, Objective B, land use and development goal, Objectives B and D. 70 notices were sent. No comment was received prior to the public hearing. Mr. Chair, there is, again, with, with a plat, there is no criteria questions that you need to go through, so this would just be a discussion and a vote.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Amy. Is everything sound in order for the applicants, or you have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, my name is done, a tremendous job summarizing the project and the proposal.
Okay, I got a question for you, Amy. So we're gonna divide this into three?
Correct.
So then that way they can have two per, so that's six?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do they have to have two on each one, or being there's three of them, can there be like three on one and one on one?
No, we'd be looking at each parcel on its own, so there'd be...
So it's all divided up evenly, so we'll meet all the, okay?
That's correct. So when we're looking at the ordinance standard for recreational vehicles, because there is no permanent home on each one of them, on either one of them, and they would all be compliant lots, each one could have two, so they'll be spread amongst those.
So the lines for the plat, they already have kind of redone, so they're in between two?
Yes, yes, mm-hmm.
Any questions or comments from the board here?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Just for the applicants, along the same lines that you were just discussing there, for Tom and his wife, where everything is configured now, because you've already had to move them once to make the compliance setbacks from wetlands, I understand?
Yes.
And, and then the sewer was updated. Where they sit now, they'll be, there's not six of them, but will they fit on each one of those lots without having to move them again?
They will, they do. We ended up having to move one three inches to comply with the surveyor's demands. So we're sure, the surveyors were there when we placed each one to make sure that everything fit the way it was supposed to with all the appropriate setbacks.
Okay.
A number of times during the process, they stopped to call Amy's office for guidance, and it was, it was a long two days, but we got it done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marv.
Well, I can remember theirs, because when they applied for the variance, and it was kind of tough when they, I think we all seen how they cared for their lots and tried to make everything work. And I, I had basically the same question, if they would meet the wetland setbacks because they were so tight, but obviously you did. And we could see how you and your family have been stewards of this and tried to do the right thing, so we appreciate that, and what you brought forward, it looks like this is something that will work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my comment would be, you know, it didn't work out the first time we come through, and you kept going, and you tried to figure out a way to make it work, and it looks like this is a good plan. And I could tell you're doing your good due diligence. You worried about three inches, and you made sure it was right, so that's good. I'm kind of glad to see that there's a good plan in front of us that came out of this. I know it cost you guys, your whole family, more dollars, but I think now here's something that's for the future that I think can, that in my eyes anyways, I kind of see it being a good, good, good proposal. Anybody else have anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Just for the record, as you're looking at the conclusions from the previous findings of the previous, after the fact variance, you know, we're living in harmony here. We're using it in a reasonable manner, and you're maintaining the essential character. So I guess those three things for me just ring, ring quite true in the, in the proposal here.
Yep.
So.
Mr. Chair?
George.
Just one comment, just to be clear, so, so if this, if we approve this, there will be no need for any variances? Everything should be able to fit where it needs to go? Okay.
Yep, that is correct.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
And I think it's wonderful to have conforming lots, because as we hear up here so often, when people come up here asking for variances because non-conforming lots, and I would bet that over half, maybe three-quarters of lots here in Morrison County are non-conforming. So I appreciate you putting conforming lots, and that is the goal of the future here. And working with Land Services.
They were great to work with her.
I'm sure Amy likes to hear that, because she don't get that all the time.
I'm surprised.
I'm a delight, by the way.
Okay, so did we do public comment yet?
Yes, you need to do that yet.
Okay, so at this time, we'll ask if there's anybody in the public that'd like to speak to this application, please go to the podium at this time. I'm gonna ask again three times, is there anybody, any public comment for this application? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Any last thoughts or words? Are you guys ready to vote on this or? Okay. So what we're looking at is replat. And then if this would, if, if this would get approved, and then it would get approved from the commissioners, it's all done. There's not another meeting. This is the final.
Yes.
Okay, so would this vote yes if you're for the replat and no if you're against? So George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, so we have every five yeses. So somebody have a motion to recommend approval?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Brent? Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
George? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. George?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. Brent?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna recommend the commissioners approve this. And that, that'll be heard on September twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and thank you for all your guys' efforts that you put into trying to make this work.
Well, thank you to Morrison County staff for all their assistance. It was great to work with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, applicants could come forward. We have Jared and Carrie Walcheski. Two, one, two, five, one, sixty-third Street, Royalton. Application for conditional use permit to expand to a tier-two feedlot located in east half of northwest quarter of northeast quarter of southwest quarter, section twenty-eight, township thirty-eight, thirty-nine, range thirty-one, Bellevue Township. If you'd please state your names for the record.
Jared Walcheski.
Carrie Walcheski.
Okay, thank you. Amy, you ready with the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request to expand to a tier-two chicken feedlot located in section twenty-eight of Bellevue Township. The ordinance references for this is section six oh four point six. That does require a conditional use permit for the establishment of feedlots. And section twelve oh nine contains the performance standards for large-scale feedlots. Here is a plat map of Bellevue Township and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the conditional use permit request received from the applicant along with a few other things, site drawing as well. Here's an aerial photograph of the parcel outlined in blue. And then some oblique imagery as well. This property is a hundred and twenty acres in size and there is a registered tier-one chicken feedlot presently operating. The applicant is proposing to expand to a tier-two, which is three hundred and one to six hundred and fifty animal units, chicken feedlot through the construction of a second barn. The total proposed animal units is four hundred and ten. The existing feedlot is compliant and meets all applicable setbacks and the proposed barn meets all setbacks. The applicant has a transfer agreement in place for manure application. That crop farmer has access to one thousand fifty acres in Bellevue Township. One hundred and three spreadable acres are needed to utilize nitrogen and two hundred and seventy-two are needed to utilize phosphorus. No long-term manure stockpiling or stacking slab is proposed. However, the applicant does propose an enclosed concrete area between the two barns for composting mortalities. The offset rating for the existing poultry feedlot is ninety-eight percent. The individual offset rating for the additional barn is ninety-seven percent. The applicant has submitted a few plans. The first one is the county, the Good Neighbor Plan. And that plan identifies that manure will be transferred within ten days of barn cleanout and mortality disposal is identified as composting. The odor minimization plan identifies development of a neighbor relation plan, prompt cleanup of spilled feed, maintenance of exhaust fans and avoidance of manure and dust accumulation, management of mortalities with an enclosed building, and reduction of length of time stockpile manure pack is maintained for odor minimization. And then finally, the stormwater plan. And that plan identifies an unnamed stream and Little Rock Creek as a receiving water within one mile of the property edge. Temporary erosion prevention practices will include check dams, minimization of soil disturbance and vegetative buffer surrounding the barn for erosion prevention practices. The applicant has been made aware that a water appropriation permit may be needed from the DNR. And then agriculture zoning is the only district where new feedlots are allowed. The Morrison County Land Use Ordinance states the purpose of the agriculture zoning district is to promote and protect areas which have high-quality agriculture lands and are essentially rural in nature. Within this district, ag activities are given precedence. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is agriculture, goal A one, objectives one and four, and eight, and then goal A two and A three, goal A four and objectives one and three. And then the comprehensive water plan goals and objectives is groundwater, goal one and two, surface water goal, objective A, land use and development goal, objective A. An environmental review was conducted by the Soil and Water Conservation District and that was included in your packet. The comments and recommendations were that the site is adequate to increase to a tier-two operation and a fifty-foot wide vegetated buffer strip around the barn to prevent erosion is recommended. Seventeen notices were sent and no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Amy. The applicants have anything to add or is everything Amy stated?
I would have to say everything, everything she stated is in line.
Okay, so I guess I'll open it up to our board. If you guys have any questions for the applicants or staff, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
Drill up good, he knows me. No, anyhow, how many years, this was Carrie's parents' barn. And I'm guessing a few years, how many years have you been running it now?
Three years.
Okay. And no complaints. I've heard, actually, got a family members that live fairly close and haven't heard anything. So I'm assuming no complaints. Next question was, was it, oh, as Ellen Rimwelski typically recommends in one of these barns to put a fifty-foot grass buffer around there by the road here. I'm sure you read that. And are you in agreement to doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm very familiar with the property. For the rest of you, this is in a very remote area. Not to bother any neighbors or anything. Yeah, there is, said, where a barn should be placed, this is like one it should be because you're off to the side, nobody really near. So it should not create any problems in the future. No wetlands real close by. So just comments that I made from that. So that's it at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marv. Just real quick, being we have this picture up, is that your guys' house just up on top of the page or whose house is that?
That would be ours.
Okay. Then I ask this question every time, but I don't have to because you guys have plenty of land. I always ask if there's more land you can get for the manure management plan because everybody's always a little close to the top. But you guys need what, like four hundred acres or two hundred? Or was it again? Anyways, you got tons of land extra that you're, the person that's getting the manure from you. So I probably don't have to ask that question of you, but that's one I always ask. Just wanted to, I had jotted down, there was a site inspection from our feedlot officer and it was compliant on August eighth of twenty twenty-four. We don't have to worry about the setback from the road because it's actually going behind the barn and it meets setbacks. I think reading through here, the soils are adequate for all that, so. Guess you guys got any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. It looks like all manure gets, doesn't get stored, gets transferred off-site to Fusi Farms. Also, it looks like during construction, you're gonna make sure you don't have runoff and stuff. Control, control runoff while, while you're building the building. Other than that, it looks like it's a very complete plan. Your, your, your error or your offset is ninety-seven percent. We like to see it up that high. Because everything looks, looks really good. And I, I am familiar with the site too, so. Thank you for a good application.
One more question for the applicants. Okay, so you're gonna push the manure out, which side of the barn? Towards the house or towards the other road? Which way?
Actually, I'm unsure on the new one.
Okay.
Because I don't, I didn't bring my, my paperwork on what pilgrims had their layout of the barn. But I'm gonna have to assume it's either gonna be in the center of the barn or the back of the barn.
Okay.
Which would be to the south.
Okay, so the main reason I ask is, we didn't, I haven't seen this property. So is that flat, that field, everything, is that fairly flat or is there like, does it run downhill?
Right now, it's a hill where the new barn is going.
Yep.
And we're gonna shave that off.
So then.
And flatten it out.
So, so where I'm getting at is, you know, you're only gonna pile your manure outside the barn for a few days until it gets picked up, right?
Correct.
But where I'm getting at is, is there any, anything where if it's piled there for, today you clean the barn out and then you get a trench of rain overnight, is, is that gonna, is the water gonna run across the property or is it kind of contained in that area? That's where I'm getting at.
It will be, it is contained now as well. And it will be contained. With, there's like a dike.
Okay.
On the south end of the property there, so.
Okay. Sounds good then. Without seeing the property, that's why I'm asking, just to make sure that any running down the field all the way down to that wetland or whatever.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments at this time? As we open it up to the public. I guess at this time, we'll take a public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this application, please go to the podium and do so now. Any public comment? Third and final time, any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Okay, you guys got any, anything else for the staff or applicants or you want to go through your criteria questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go through the criteria questions at this time. Okay, question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. We'll start with you, John.
It will not. At this point, there's, well, there's no public facilities or parks or schools anywhere nearby. And the traffic you're talking about is probably a truck every two to three weeks, an extra truck. So, yeah, we're not putting any excess burden on, well, any of that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything to add to question one? Now we'll move to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. I'll take that one. I believe I would have to answer yes. I think it will not be detrimental. If we look, there's already a poultry barn there. The landscape in the proposed area for this barn, hearing no concerns with wetlands too close. There is no residents too close. They meet all setbacks. It is out in agriculture and in our comprehensive plan. It, in, in that agriculture takes precedence. I think it's a good fit where the area is. Seems like everything is in order as far as when you look at the manure management plan. They got plenty of land for the, the person that they transfer the manure to. And it's kind of a good commodity because you get rid of it even if he's done farming.
Right.
So that's good. It's good to hear that the proposed site where you're gonna push out manure for the day or two or three, whatever it is, is kind of contained with some diking and, and so during it won't be no runoff. The whole neighborhood should be used to it because there's one there already, right? Okay, so I'd have to answer yes to question two. Any more comments or anybody have anything to say to question two? If not, we'll move to question three. We'll go to Brent for that one. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use.
While the existing land use there is ag, they are utilizing it with a tier-one operation now, expanding it to a tier-two. So I think we're in conformity there. With reference to the groundwater, I think with the recommended condition of a fifty-foot wide vegetated buffer strip around the barn to prevent any erosion is good. Solid, or conservation review was done. They say that it's adequate to increase to a size-two operation. Reference to the air quality in the area, they're operating at a ninety-eight offset now. Expanding to the tier-two is gonna mitigate that to a ninety-seven percent, which is not significant decline. Surface water, I think we've covered. Air quality covered, groundwater. I think with the streams and the creek being as far away as they are, there's not going to be any adverse impact to that as well.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Anybody have anything to add to question three? Okay, we'll move on to question four. George can have this one. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use.
I'd have to answer yes to this one, Mr. Chairman. It's agricultural zoning. They're proposing to go to a tier-two feedlot. The building is, all chickens are inside, so there's not, not exposed to the outside. And as been already said, you know, groundwater, they're taking into consideration runoff during construction. And everything should be in order. They got, everything looks good. The manure is only going a couple miles down the road. So should be a good operation.
Okay, anybody have anything to add to question four? Hearing none, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Marvin?
Yes, and the reason why, it fits our comp plan. I mean, fits it almost to a T. And I will read some of our goals here. A one, ensure the county provides and protects the most suitable and strong, stable agriculture industry, which, you know, raising chickens is, but not limited to crop production, animal husbandry, dairy and meat production, passionlands and other similar areas. Objective one, ensure the county's policies and ordinance do not restrict farming practice except the necessary to ensure compliance with the law. Objective four, encourage the use of odor-reducing technology to minimize the impacts of feedlots. Ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, up there. Objective eight, recognizes the efforts of local and regional organization to support agriculture economy. Goal A two, achieve the appropriate balance. We continue growth and desire of people of certain business to locate in rural areas. So it's a business running this here. Goal A three, understand the positive and negative impacts. We're looking at it. They're going through the proper procedures here. Goal A four, recognize the importance of agricultural practices, manure management. We talked about that. Objective one, working with local farmers and landowners, soil and water, which you did that. And objective three, recognize the issues of feedlots and animals' confiance in areas. So it fits it right to a T, so.
Okay, thank you, Marv. Anybody have anything to add to question five? Okay, if not, any other comments or dialogue before we vote? One is, I'd just say, condition we probably have is the fifty-foot buffer around the proposed building site. You guys see any other conditions? Um, you guys see any other conditions? I don't, okay, so keep in mind, we got that, the one condition. So we'll just proceed to vote then. Okay, "The use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools." John?
Yes.
Uh, myself Clint is yes, Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question two, "The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area." Myself Clint is yes, Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
"The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use." Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Question four, "The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use." George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes, Brent?
Yes.
Question five, "The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county." Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes, Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay, all the questions were answered in, in affirmative, so I guess I'd take a motion to recommend approval with the one condition.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Brent and seconded by Marvin to recommend approval with the one condition. All in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Myself Clint is aye, Brent?
Aye.
Uh, George?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Okay. We'll recommend approval to the county board of commissioners, they'll review this and make their decision on September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys have any questions in between time, contact Amy or staff at Land Service.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take it easy, Marv.
Good seeing you.
Okay, so at this time, I, we'd, uh, take a motion to approve our minutes from August twentieth?
I, motion so moved.
I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made and seconded, approve the August twentieth minutes, all in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved, um, any new business?
I do not have any, Mr. Chair.
I have none either, any old business? I don't have any, Amy, you have any, no?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time we take a motion adjourned then. So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Brent, seconded by George to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, mo, meeting adjourned at six-four-fifty-four, fifty-three.